Call the meeting to order. City of University Heights, city council meeting today is June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the meetings being conducted, conducted electronically. Welcome everyone, as Mike said, we love seeing all you here tonight, that's great. A roll call, I've all five council are present and they're marked with their names. And then first is approval of minutes. We'll try to do them together, we have the council meeting by April eleventh and the special meeting of April twenty-third.
That's, I'm sorry, that's May ninth and May twenty-third. I, I may have put April on that by mistake.
Yeah, I'm like, wait a minute, is this June?
No.
May ninth, but you did send the right minutes.
I sent the right minutes, I, I was living in the past.
Thank you, so we'll do those two minutes, are there any additions or corrections? To either of those minutes, hearing none, them both minutes will be approved by unanimous consent. Okay, now we have public input, so hopefully many of you would like to speak tonight. We like hearing from the public and as Mike said, please hold your comments to five minutes or less. And who would like to speak first? Just. You can. How about, uh, let's see if I look across this list. There's Jonathan, Jerry, Pat, Stan. Would anyone like to speak?
Hi, this is Jerry Fainman, I live on twenty-five Olive Court. And the reason that I'm at this meeting is I've heard about the parking lot on the corner. And of course, I'm not particularly enthused as I'll be sitting in my front living room looking at cars parked a couple hundred feet from me and so, you know, that's the main reason I here. And as I guess to register my displeasure is the fact that somebody's going to put a parking lot in my front yard. And that's all I really have to say.
Thank you, Jerry. Would anyone else like to speak now?
Yeah, this is Jonathan Wilson, I am neighbors with Jerry on twenty-three Olive Court. And my thoughts are in line with Jerry, the other concern I have is that there's just not enough parking spots to make a substantial difference for those who work in the university. So I would advocate for not moving forward with that change, given that information.
Thank you, Jonathan, I appreciate your comments. Now we have a couple more people when anyone else, we have. Hmm, oh Stan, you're right there, you got your face showing.
Yeah, Stan Loverman, twenty-four Highland Drive, um, this is on the agenda, are we gonna have an opportunity to comment after more information is presented?
Um, well, uh, this is a, is that when you want to speak, like you want to make comments?
I'd like to hear what the applicant is proposing, uh, tonight before I would comment on that, yeah.
Okay. We'll give you, uh, each of you maybe three more minutes, is that okay? Ben, is that okay with the council to give him a little time there?
You bet.
Okay, very good, now we have Pat and Mike, would either of you like to speak? Okay, I don't hear from either of you, so we'll go on to.
Before we, before we do go on Louise, I did hear from Nick Herbold, who had sent an email to council and he asked if, if that could be read tonight as well, so I can do that.
Oh, okay, thank you, do that.
This is Nick Herbold, twelve fifty Melrose Avenue. I write in opposition to the requested changes to the city regulations in relation to the courtyard by Marriott. I'm glad to see that the hotel is doing well and I send people to it who are staying in town. However, I know it is surprising to many members of the community to see the violations of the PUD agreement, development agreement on game days and the lack of enforcement of the agreement by the city. I also do not think that a parking lot and temporary signs right next to Melrose would help the image of the community. My understanding is that the community and the council want Melrose to look more aesthetically pleasing and this parking lot would take us in the opposite direction. Lastly, when the rooftop restaurant space was approved, it was considered to be an amenity to the community. While the event space is nice, I do not see why the community should make more concessions by creating a parking lot when the space is not being used for the amenity to which the community had anticipated. Thank you, Nick Herbold.
Thank you, did you have any other emails?
No, I did not.
Okay, thank you very much, so we'll go ahead and go to mayor's report and I don't have anything right now, I'm gonna discuss it during finance. And so the legal report, Steve wrote about this, uh, application to the PUD, so Steve, could you speak to that next?
You bet, I'm happy to, uh, thanks. As noted, I, I, you know, I gave a, a short history of some of the process that the city went through as a part of approving the hotel, uh, as you may recall, the hotel property had been a, a single family, uh, uh, dwelling and was just one home on the property and a lot of trees and, and, uh, was kind of tucked back. In any event, uh, so, so the council, uh, changed the zoning to create what was called a CH commercial hotel zone and provided that, um, development could occur, uh, as a hotel pursuant to a, a planned unit development or PUD, uh, development agreement. And, uh, that, that zoning vehicle is a, is a way for the city to, uh, be flexible in, in terms of what might be permitted, uh, regarding the development and also to, uh, work with, uh, the, the developer and kind of have a back and forth about a whole, a whole host of things that made their way into this development agreement. So, um, as I said in my report, then, uh, so, so the, the zoning approval was, was granted, uh, in, uh, September of two thousand and seventeen. The PUD development agreement was entered into in December of two thousand and seventeen, so just a few months later. And then just a few months after that, uh, so, so and then initially the, the hotel development called for a hundred and fifty-six parking spaces. And that number was derived, uh, by looking at various, uh, engineering, uh, and, uh, design standards, number of hotel rooms, uh, our own zoning ordinance and things like that. Anyway, a few months after the, the development agreement was entered into, uh, then the hotel developers said, you know, we think we'd like to put a restaurant on the top floor after all, they, I think they originally didn't think they would do that. I know they, I know they said that because some people asked about it and they said, no, we're not doing that. And then they said, yeah, maybe we will. So the, uh, council, uh, the zoning commission considered, uh, a requested change and the council approved that change in April of two thousand and eighteen to permit the, uh, sixth floor of the hotel to be used as a restaurant and to change the, uh, permitted number of parking spaces from a hundred and fifty-six to a hundred and ninety-six, ninety-six, one fifty-six to one ninety-six, so that was in April of, um, of two thousand and eighteen. Excuse me, uh, so then of course the, um, the pandemic came along and the, uh, the, the person who owned a restaurant that was gonna open on the sixth floor at the hotel, you know, uh, said he wasn't gonna do that because they said it was in the middle of the pandemic. And so the, the hotel owners, uh, came back to the city and said, you know, we'd like to change the permitted use of that sixth floor space. Uh, so it, it, so it could be, it could be a, a restaurant, but we'd also like to have it be convention and, um, uh, meeting space. And so the council, uh, did not send that to the zoning commission at that time, but did approve, uh, that, uh, that change in two thousand and twenty and said, yeah, that's fine, you could use a, uh, use, use that space, uh, restaurant, convention space, uh, meeting space. Um, there wasn't any discussion then about any changes to the, uh, parking and, and there weren't any changes to the parking. And so, so that's, that's the history, uh, and, and I won't, you know, I won't speak to the reasons for the changes that the hotel, uh, owners would like to have now, I'll, I'll let them do that, but, but I will say that, um, that if the council desires to move forward with the requested changes, as I said in my legal report, the, uh, zoning, a zoning, uh, change will be necessary. Uh, and then the council has the option to send that kind of a requested change to the zoning commission for its review and comment recommendation. Or the zone, or excuse me, the council could just take up that zoning change on its own. Um, either way, if it starts at the council or if it goes to the zoning commission and comes back to the council, the council would hold a public hearing and then would be required to vote, uh, and approve that zoning change three times, just like any other ordinance, approve it three times unless the council collapsed any of those readings, um, uh, to approve a zoning change. And then, uh, as I've mentioned, there's this PUD development agreement and the terms of that would also need to be amended. And the process for doing that is simply to, uh, you know, draft the changes and the council would vote on that or consider that one time at, at, at just one meeting. Uh, once the zoning had been changed and it could happen at the same meeting when the zoning was changed, so. So it's not an overnight process, I guess is what I'm, what I'm saying and how long it takes, uh, you know, it's, it's sort of up to the council uh, in terms of whether the zoning commission is asked to give its input and in terms of whether the council, uh, what it desires to do to solicit uh, community input and those kinds of things, so that, that's, uh, that's my summary.
Thank you, Steve, does anyone have any questions for Steve? I'm asking this about the council, does council have any questions? Okay, I don't see anybody does, uh, we'll go, uh, Greg Stiltner's here, one of the developers of the hotel. And Greg, would you like to give a background of why you want it, why you want to have parking, et cetera?
I didn't see me now, yes.
Thank you, yes, we can see you.
Awesome. Um, yeah, so I, um, thanks for, you know, first of all, thanks, thanks to everybody for listening to me and can, and, uh, maybe considering this. Um, so over the last year or so, as the hotel ramps up, um, we have been getting, you know, busier and busier on the, the rooftop, uh, event space. Um, and we have weekly meetings and the staff meetings and it's become, um, pretty frustrating for me because my staff is constantly asking me, you know, what, you know, how, is there any way we can, you know, get more parking, how, how can we get more parking and it, parking woes here, parking woes there. Um, this person's complaining, this person's complaining, there's just a lot of complaints on not enough parking. And when the hotel, you know, is seventy percent and then we have a two to four hundred percent event, you know, there's just absolutely no parking. And as Steve was saying, I think we added thirty more spaces. Um, adding thirty more spaces for, uh, an area that can hold two to four hundred people. It's just not feasible, so we're constantly struggling for more parking. So that is what brought me to looking for a space, I have, you know, um, the space up at, at the up by the road that is in question and it, um, you know, it's grass, there's nothing on it. And it's, it's zone commercial and, you know, we, we paid, you know, a lot of money for that house, um, that was on it. And it got rezoned to a commercial space, so we thought, how could we utilize this space for parking, so that's, so I figured out how many we could potentially fit on there. And I, I had an engineer draw it up and, uh, I submitted it, uh, to Terry Gert and he submitted it to you guys and that's how the process got started. As, um, we got into it, Terry and, and Ryan notified and, and Steve notified me that we're going to have to change the PUD to get this approved because I was only allotted a hundred and ninety-six spots, I think. And now we're on the, as we are on the, 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 um, the process of trying to, you know, get the idea, I guess, of moving forward with changing the PD to, to, to see if it's something the city council would, would allow. Um, there's a couple other things in the PUD that I feel I would, I want to try to change to help our hotel. Now, the hotel, it, it's a nice hotel and it costs a lot of money to build that place. And in, you know, it, we, we have a nice spot, we have a nice property, but our bills are a lot as well, it takes a lot of money to run that place. And, uh, the property tax, uh, you know, I was, you know, you guys heard me say this before, but the, our property tax bill, our new property tax bill just came out and it, it's thirty-three thousand a month and that's a month, that's, that's, that's a lot of money to come up with just for property tax and then you have to pay for the actual construction of the building, it's just, our bills are just, you know, so much, it's just, it's overwhelming for me. Um, it, it gives me so much anxiety and then the banks, they didn't want to finance the hotel because i- if anybody's in the banking industry, they know hospitality is, is extremely, um, uh, you know, it, it's high risk, so we had actually nine banks participate because no one bank wants to, wants to, to finance it because it's such high risk and they make you put a lot of money down, which made me have to go get investors. I didn't have enough money to put down on the hotel, so I had to reach out to get a lot of investors. I have over twenty and, and, uh, and I think, um, Jim ended up moving some money around and, and buying one of them out and, uh, and he cashed in some annuities and, and, and paid another one, but we haven't, we haven't, we, ninety-five percent of our investors have not seen one penny from their investment, so it's really hard for me as a person to promise them something that I can't deliver on, that really frustrates me, so I'm, as I'm thinking this through, I'm thinking, okay, in the PUD, I'm restricted on two things. One, football parking and daytime parking. So football parking, everybody does football parking everywhere. So I don't, you know, as a commercial space, I feel like, yes, in the PUD, we agreed not to do it. But I'm struggling to create the revenue and I'm struggling to um, make the investors happy and or Jim and I and Michelle, we haven't, we haven't pulled any money out of our hotel on that property and it, it, it's, it's, it's hard that when you have that nice of a property that you can't pull the money out, yeah, I, I've eaten there and, and not paid for it because, yes, I own the building, but as far as making money on a, a monthly base, I don't, I don't, I don't have that, so. So, long story short, um, wanted to try to find a way, you know, organically, as I wanted to change the PUD, I thought, well, why can't I rent a space, I rent hotel rooms? Why can't I rent a space, um, for a daytime parker that will only be there till three or four o'clock in the afternoon? And, um, and the PUD restricts that, so those are two items that could help us, um, you know, along, you know, pay for the building, the nice building and, and we keep, we keep things nice, I, I, I pay a lot of money to, for the staff to keep the hotel clean, to pay a lot of money to, to, uh, make the hotel, um, pleasant to be in, like, uh, we, we, with, with, a lot of people don't know the Marriott, uh, GSS scores is what Marriott tells you you're ranked in the country. We finished last year number two in the country out of thirteen hundred and like fifty Marriott courtyards across the country. We are the number two, the number two Marriott in the country. And that, this just speaks volumes to my staff and, and to the people and the cleanliness and how much we, how much effort we put into making our, our hotel amazing. We, um, we do a lot, we do a lot every day to, to, to make the, um, the customers happy. Now, um, moving forward, I just, I struggle every day with, with these, these decisions on financial decisions, so I thought, why not allow, since I rent space, what, why not allow me to rent? Since I rent hotel rooms, why not allow me to rent space or, you know, parking spaces, so. So that's why I wanted to maybe propose to allow me to do what everybody in the community does and, and have tailgaters and also rent some space to, um, the people at the hospital to help us pay for the building, it's, it's just, it's, it's hard, it's, it wears on me every day, it's so, so hard. Um, so that's, that's, so that's the three things is, um, more, um, more, uh, parking space because we're struggling, we actually hired Permar to help us manage the parking because we had so many complaints to, we have so many complaints that we hired Permar to come in on Friday and Saturday nights to manage the people so we could cut, cut down on the complaints because if we get a complaint with Marriott it just kills our scores and.
Um, by complaints, who do you mean complaining?
The, the hotel guests, hotel guest complain a lot because not enough parking. Um, yeah, anyway, um, we, Michelle wanted me to mention that we, 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 we take care of the, the trash on football Saturdays. Um, we make sure our place is extremely clean at all times as much as possible, we spend a lot of effort and energy in making the place beautiful at all times, so I, um, I just want you guys to know, if you did allow me to put a parking lot up there, that I would absolutely do the same. That is, there's a beautiful red tree, I think it's a red maple, we're leaving that tree. And I would absolutely put more beautiful red maples or what other trees are all the way around it to make it look amazing, um, to make it look beautiful, right now it's just a piece of grass. And now if we, if we do put a concrete in the middle of it, I would surround that thing with nice beautiful trees and, and make it even better than, way better than what it looks like right now, I totally could do that, it wouldn't but not be a problem at all.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna keep this moving on and Stan wanted to speak at some point and ask a question or two and Stan, did you want to address Greg now or the council?
I didn't necessarily want to address Greg and I just wanted to hear what he's proposing, um. I find this kind of a bait and switch actually in that when this, um, project went through, I think there was a lot of work that went into the design of it, especially along the Melrose corridor. Uh, and I think particular attention was paid to get the hotel off the Melrose corridor to give that a residential feel. Um, I appreciate everything that, uh, the investors have done with this hotel, I think it's a great hotel. Um, I can tell you that I have investments that I've made over the past two years that I'm not getting any money from, so. Um, I, I know it's a struggle, uh, it's a struggle for all of us, but that, I don't, I, I don't see the, the need that the city has to, um, bend and allow sixteen additional parking spaces in a green space that was meant to be a buffer to the neighborhood. Additionally, uh, the hotel was agreed on because we kind of expected those normal lulls in the week of less traffic through the area and less use of the hotel, uh, I think that was a selling point to us as well. So to allow commercial parking on a weekly basis increases the commi- commercial activity to this property, which is an expansion of that and I don't, I, I think that's a substantial increase. Um, we're faced with issues with traffic on Melrose already, uh, with the university, uh, putting parkings, uh, lots to the south of Melrose for the first time. Um, the parking pressure and the traffic pressure coming off of those lots is incredible already, um, at the times that you're talking about, um. Um, yeah, and especially I, I would look at it, I, I appreciate what the hotel has brought to the community, I think it's an asset. Uh, I, I don't see the benefit of removing that green space, I realize it's just grass. But, um, I think grass is a lot better aesthetic to there, um, as, as you work down that Melrose corridor as opposed to a parking lot. Um, and, and honestly, you know, if, I think there's a lot of other steps that could be taken to, to regulate parking there and, and to give you more parking spaces, if you, if you told me that you had staff parking offsite, that you're busing people in, I would say, yeah, you probably have a problem, but, um, I think there's a lot of steps that could be taken. Um, as far as the PUD not allowing football parking, I've been at a lot of hotels that have different packages for parking. Um, I think creative, um, and, and work your way around that without violating the current PUD, but, you know, getting compensated for that parking, I think the demand for that hotel is very high. And I don't see it going away and on football Saturdays, uh, and I think you could, yeah, Greg, you're a smart guy, I think you can figure that one out. Uh, and then lastly, I, I would say, I would, I would expect someone coming before council to be in full compliance at the time they came before council and we've got a temporary sign in the right of way up there and it's not that big a deal, but it's just one of those things where, let's, um, you know, let's, let's walk the walk, you know, we, we, let's make sure that we're in compliance with the rules that they are, you might not agree with them, but we did agree to those rules. I wasn't on council at that time, but I thought the council did a very nice job balancing the, the use of that property, uh, I think University Heights has gained a lot from that property, but I think it's a balance between what the community needs and what the hotel needs and as you, as counselors make this decision, I would ask, what's the community benefit to making this change? Thank you.
Thank you, Stan, uh, did, now, did anyone else want to speak in addition? Uh, you can take yourself off mute. Okay, I see Mike Ritchie took himself on mute, do you want to speak, Mike?
Uh, yes, Louise, um, Mike Ritchie, uh, twenty Olive Court. Uh, one thing I'd like to say about the hotel is that it's just, uh, such a plus. Uh, the way the place looks, it's always clean, I've seen it over there on game day. Um, they're cleaning the whole time and, and as soon as the game's over with, that place is immaculate. Also under, with the, the hotel being a relatively new business, you know, things change, you have to be able to adapt, uh, to changes in your business and stuff and, uh, um, I don't live over there, I'm a landlord, but I take pride in my property and I don't see any issue with, uh, from what that becomes grass and that, especially if Greg is willing to, uh, surround that parking lot area with some sort of trees which might even block, uh, um, the, the lot and, uh, give it a better, uh, look. But, uh, I applaud the effort that, uh, Greg and Jim and Michelle have done on the place, I mean, the place is always immaculate. Um, over there and I'm proud to have it, uh, by my property.
Hey, thank you, Mike, uh, would anyone else like to speak? Oh, Mary?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, Mary, thank you.
I live at Forty Cozer, so I'm around the corner, I think the hotel is an asset to the neighborhood as well, but I agree with everything that Stan said, I think it would make a big difference to change the green space where Margaret's house was. Originally, when the developers came to the meeting before they ever bought the property, my recollection was that I know I brought it up and somebody else brought up, how are you gonna bring the traffic out because I was concerned about it coming out where it used to come out, um, when Michael and Lauren owned the property. And I remember that they said it's not gonna come out there, but it does come out there. They said they were gonna tear down Margaret's house and bring it out there, which it doesn't. Apparently it's working to come out where it is, so that's fine, but I, I just think the green space is the last hold on that the people that live right there have for the semblance of a neighborhood. And if you move a parking lot even closer, I just don't think it's fair to those people. I sympathize with the issues that you're having, Mr. Stiltner, but I just, again, not to be insensitive, but I don't think the city can take on that for you.
Okay, thank you, Mary, thank you, uh, would anyone else like to speak, they can take themselves off mute. And, uh, I think Jonathan did.
Yeah, uh, so Jonathan Wilson, twenty-three Olive Court again, um, just a reminder too that, uh, there are properties that have twenty-one year covenants, so you're not allowed to rent your property out and that was agreed upon when. And that was agreed upon when um purchasing those properties on Olive Court. Um, so at that time, those owners know that they're unable to rent their property um, as part of that transaction. And this is similar in the sense that there was understanding that they would not be allowed to rent that lot for commercial use in this capacity. So I just wanted to throw that out there as a reminder. And that was to keep the aesthetic of the community and ensure that single-family homes were in that area and that it felt like a community rather than a parking lot. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Jonathan. Uh, would anyone else like to speak now? Uh, you can take yourself off mute. Pat Yegi, you're not on mute, but did you want to speak? Uh, otherwise, uh, okay, so uh, I don't see anybody else who wants to speak, but let's go to some discussions. So Steve, you said that the decision tonight has to be, if council wants to move this forward, how do we move it forward? Is it, you know, if it goes to the zoning commission or if it goes to a decision that they want to make? And I do want to say that I've been to all the zoning commissions meetings and the zoning commission is extremely busy right now uh with revamping the uh zoning ordinances and they're gonna be uh organizing a public meeting for that. I'm gonna say that. I mean, of course, the council can add to their plate. But um I I would recommend that the council uh, take this on. And uh, I, and if they do, uh, from my understanding of meeting with Steve and Ryan Foley, the engineer, and Terry Gert, that the next thing would be to have a public hearing. Is that right, Steve?
Yeah, that's right.
Could you speak on that a little bit, like how that would be if the council went that direction?
Yeah, uh, so uh, again, whether it goes through the zoning commissioner doesn't, it at the point where it comes to the council formally, uh, the council would uh would publish notice of a proposed uh zoning change uh, in the Press Citizen and and uh the council would mail notice to uh property owners within two hundred feet of uh of the boundaries of the hotel, just like it does with any other rezoning. And then the council at a at a regular council meeting would then have a um, would have a public hearing. Um, you know, which would be a formal opportunity for anyone to uh comment on the proposed change, which would, which would be, you know, formalized, not just in the not just a description in a legal report, but it would say this is exactly how the how the proposed change to the zoning ordinance is gonna look if it's adopted. And so the public hearing would be held and anyone could speak uh in any, any respect they they would like. Uh, and then at that point, uh, you you know, the public hearing would be adjourned, uh, the regular council meeting would be uh convened or reconvened. And um, and when when it came time for that item to be uh uh come up on the agenda, then the council you know, would would vote on the on the proposed uh zoning change. And as I said, and if it was defeated, uh uh, then that would be the end of it. Uh, if it if it was adopted or approved, then it would, it would go through uh two more readings of the council. Those those would not be preceded by a formal public hearing. Um, as I've said before, uh, the way the University City Council tends to run its its uh council meetings quite admirably, I think. You know, we have public hearings all the time. Uh, we don't always call them that. But but so so it's not as though public input wouldn't be taken at the second and third readings. My expectation is it would very much be taken, just like it was tonight. But uh, there would not be a formal notice published and that notice would not be sent to uh neighboring property owners. And that that's how the process would go.
Thank you for explaining it. I needed a refresher myself. Thank you. How does council want to proceed with this?
Stephanie, were you waving or?
No, but I will, am am I off mute?
Yes.
Okay, I uh, I don't see any reason why we need to send it to zoning. I think that this is something we can handle ourselves. I'm uh I'm honestly looking forward to having a public hearing and having members of the community and residents come and speak and hear what they have to say. Um I think that moving it forward, we would uh schedule that public hearing and not go with zoning commission. Bottom line.
Okay, does anyone agree or disagree?
I would, okay, Doug, do you want to go?
No, no, go ahead. I I I I agree at least uh going into it a little bit further and adding public input. Maybe give us a little clearer vision on which direction to proceed or maybe not at all, but uh I see no reason not to move forward.
So I would say, um, I agree, the hotel is great. I think it's very successful. I've heard from somebody who knows an investor and says the investors that he knows about seem happy. I think it's been operating two years and to expect to be you know, making a lot of money might be a bit unrealistic. I feel for you, Greg, that you're having struggles and that you're feeling anxious. But I feel it's my job to be concerned about the Fangmans and Jonathan Wilson and the other people that live over there who are gonna be faced with a parking lot on the corner of their street, which is a street we have paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to redo. Jonathan Wilson brought up that there are two homes on there that we spent time trying to turn into owner occupied properties, they're deed restricted, and now we want to stick a parking lot on the corner of that street. Um, Greg, you say you made promises to investors. You made promises to this, to the residents, you made promises to me. You gained my support on the basis of those assurances that you now want to undo. I remember the meeting with, you know, the public in twenty seventeen where people said, all you want to do is have a game day tailgating hotel. Nice or not, they were concerned about that. You never mentioned having a, operating a public um commercial parking facility. But people said, we don't want that. That's why we have that agreement. And I had at least one resident say to me when I spoke to them about what you're proposing, I told you so. I told you they were gonna do this. You know, and I know that sounds very unpleasant, but it's my job as a city council member to look out for the city and for residents. I would not want a parking lot next to me. I don't think that spot is a good place for a parking lot anyway. Um I I just think that we spent a lot of time as residents. I know the council at the time spent a lot of time in twenty seventeen on public input then and plans and negotiations and trying to mitigate the negative effects of a giant hotel in a space that used to be a green space, negative effects on Olive Court. I like the hotel. It's a beautiful hotel. I think passing it, I think even passing it on to the next meeting is going to have the effect of, we're gonna have to have factions and people being told this is what's going on and I don't want to go back to the divisions that we had. I don't want to go back to the negative comments that were made about council members and elected officials and developers and I just think the public input is always welcome, but I think five council members just need to walk down there and look and say would I want to live next to a parking lot? Like the Fangmans are saying, you think they're not feeling anxious about this? You know, a- all of the people down there must be feeling very anxious that we're considering that we're gonna, oh, we need public input so that, so that what? So that we can hear from somebody that, maybe somebody that lives in the far side of town that doesn't even drive down Melrose, say, I don't mind having a hotel hotel with a parking lot on the, on Melrose. You know, I just think I'm ready to stop making concessions. We've made a lot, Greg. And I've made some, and I'm starting to regret them. You know, we were, we have a fifth floor that now is causing us problems. It was supposed to be a restaurant. It had enough parking supposedly figured out by a formula for a restaurant. And with a venue, you're saying two hundred to four hundred people? That parking lot you're proposing, is it gonna make a dent in that? But it is going to make a dent in the enjoyment of the people that live there and in their opinion of the city council and frankly, you know, of the developers. I I just don't want that to happen. I think as someone said, you're a smart guy. There are other options you can pursue. And I suggest to the council that we just say no to this proposal. We, we don't pass it on to the zoning. We don't have public input. We say to the developers, think up some more creative solutions to this problem that you're having. And I can think of a number of things you could do if you would, rather than dividing our community yet again over a development and over the hotel for the second time. So Greg, I do wish you the best. I do like the hotel. But my job is not to make you happy necessarily. It's, I I've got to be concerned about residents.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Would anyone else like to speak?
I, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, just in general feedback, I'm trying to process how I feel about it too. I mean, to you, Lisa, you asked the question, you know, how would I feel if if they build a parking lot right next to my house? Um, I mean, I don't know that I would love that. Um, however, you know, I think a difference is you know, it it that that area is in my mind as I think about it, it is more of a commercial area. And I'm wondering if we're afraid of something that we can prevent altogether, like you know, right now, it's just a green space. If if, you know, what they proposed and and I, you know, I wonder if there's more of a way rather than just trees or something to to actually truly create a barrier uh, that would really make a better buffer and would it would would allow the hotel some relief on the parking thing. I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't know the numbers on how much, whatever sixteen spots is gonna make a difference. I I don't know. But I also know that, you know, things happened in the way they happened. None of us really planned it, you know, with the way it was gonna be a restaurant and then an event center. And so now it is an event center and there are real problems that the hotel's facing. I'm not really excited about the fact that we have hotel guests pulling back after their you know, events wherever they're at in Iowa City, they come back to the hotel and now they can't find a parking spot because the whole engine's full. And you know, I I would, I don't know how big of an impact that has on the the health and you know, well-being and the longevity of the hotel, but I do know that they don't want to have unhappy customers, and I think that's important. Um, I also, you know, I also value the the residents and how they feel. And so I wonder, just is there you know, I mean, it's it's like you either say, well, you have to just ax the whole event center. You can't have it anymore. Well, we've already approved it, so there we are. And like, and you have to make it a, you have to make it a restaurant now because that is gonna have less parking. Well, that's, that's a deal breaker for, I'm guessing, for the developers. Like, they, but they've already invested millions into that, just the event center itself, much less the changing it back to a restaurant. I don't know, I'm just throwing out ideas. It's like, the only, the option really is you just deal with complaints or you try to figure out ways to alleviate it. Um, I feel like, you know, I wonder if there's a way to create a buffer there that would actually be a benefit to the people, like uh Jerry looking out his front, you know, something that is, it does create a nice little buffer between the residential and the commercial. And so I'm just not convinced that it wouldn't be something that people would be happy with at the end of the day and the hotel would be helped in the end. So I don't know what that means as far as next steps, but I just in terms of where I'm at with the whole thing, that's kind of, that's kind of how I'm processing it.
Greg, could you come up with some um design ideas of what kind of a buffer, whether they're a hard fence or a bush or a tree and kind of give us a a concept? I I think a lot of people need visual aids to kind of help maybe alleviate some some concerns and and maybe address some issues. Um, is there any way you can throw something together and present to the council, maybe?
Absolutely. I um, I was just, as he was talking, I was actually trying to think, you know, what kind of a buffer. I mean, obviously, green, greenery is um great. I mean, I know that you can have some greenery that is really thick and can't see through it. Um, it looks good. I, obviously, trees are nice. Um, I uh definitely, yes, I'll, I'll.
I I I I'm, and what I had in my mind, and I'm just throwing it out there, you know, almost some kind of like really nice. I mean, this is gonna be a cost, but some kind of nice, like, two-foot brick, like paver, not brick paver, but like a brick, like a
Retaining wall?
Retaining, uh, almost a retaining wall, but a knee wall, but it's a basically a huge planter. Like, imagine a big planter, like, kind of like we have outside of O U P with all these windows out here, but that's a hole running along the outside of it. And then you have, like, boxwoods, something that really does all year round provide green uh, um, obstruction of sight and a sound barrier for traffic anyway.
So there is a sign there that needs to be visible.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And you, go ahead.
So still, as you're talking, uh, she was saying, I, that's exactly what I was thinking, visualizing in her head as you.
Boxwoods are sculptable, so they can be, like, clean hedged um, and really beautifully trimmed and shaped as well as then design planter boxes overflowing with flowers. Like, if you guys have been to our hotel and you see the planter boxes that are around where the seating area is, I imagine something with um perennials, annuals, to be very beautiful, like the corner triangle square, you know, something that would really be something to look at for people to go by instead of just a blank lawn of dried up grass. But anyways, uh, you know, a beautiful.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I think just having a vision for it, where a visual maybe would give a visual, uh, give people a vision and to see what maybe that could be. And you know, I think it's like, you know, I'm, you know, I'm afraid people are all, like, people are afraid of the unknown and that makes sense. That's how we are. That's how we are. But, you know, just like with the hotel, it's come in and I think it's a huge asset to the community. I I I don't want to shut this down just because I'm worried about an unknown. I want to, you know, see it out and see what it could be.
Yeah, so I guess I would like to say, I don't think I'm afraid of the unknown. I think there are better options that they should look at. And, you know, you can talk about greenery and, I mean, we have that buffer that was presented as this beautiful lush buffer on the west side. But it's not quite what it was presented as. I mean, I don't I see the direction that some of you want to go. I'm just pointing out that you're not gonna be able to screen this from people's houses that are up on the hill very well, little bit elevated there on Olive Court. Like, has been pointed out, we have put restrictions on two of those houses. I just don't feel that good about doing this at all, but um, I do think there are other options you could explore. And I guess I want to ask this because someone brought this up to me. I was not aware of it. There's a a space at the south. A space at the south southeast corner of the property. I think you can see it on the aerial. There's a little blue line that juts out and someone said that they've seen. RVs parked there. They've seen something parked there. It's down below the fence. So I don't know where that's coming from, how to get to it, what it is. Is there a space there that you've been using for parking at some point? Go ahead, Greg.
So. That's a space where. Back many years ago, that's where the railroad. You should say it this way, the railroad didn't take an extra fifty feet. So somewhere along the history of the property, the railroad took an extra fifty feet. And and then that was where the railroad didn't take fifty feet. So it's, so it's actually our property. It's just um to access that property is to go down Woodside Drive and all the way around. You cannot access the property from the top. It's it's uh only accessible from Woodside Drive.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm I'm in line with Lisa on on this. I don't think sixteen spaces is a solution to this and the controversy would cause to the neighbors there that have restrictions on them. And to encroach on their space is just a big mistake politically to just. Keep giving concessions. I think there's other ways to manage this. Maybe that space could be dedicated that we were just referring to. Could be dedicated to staff parking or something, or it could be negotiating with the University of Iowa to be using the space across the street. In down times, um, you know, when it's less populated for the staff or something, but the thing. Uh, getting creative is the solution here. And um sixteen spaces isn't gonna solve your issue. You gotta gotta figure out a bigger solution than that, cuz it's gonna create a lot of problems for a lot of people. And so I don't support that at all. I'm less concerned about. How you manage that those spaces during the day? Or maybe even during football games, but you know, adding parking in that space isn't the solution in my mind.
Greg, did you wanna speak?
Yeah, I I I don't know if I'm allowed to disclose, um. I will say it is a lot of oversight, you know, when we built this place. I mean, it was a mass project. You know, looking early on at every, I mean, Jim is a plumbing contractor. I'm an electrical contractor. Wasn't. Like we knew exactly how to build this thing and exactly what to do and the right things to do. We, you know, we winged it a lot and but yeah, see, there was a lot of oversight on things. Um, I I agree, um, a lot of promises, you know, uh, that I'm I'm struggling with. And this is one of them and I I uh. You know, you get into a corner, what do you do? And the one of our sites was this massive. Sixteen thousand square foot space on the top of this hotel. It 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 putting a restaurant up there or a or an event center. Well, it thirty, you know, thirty extra spaces, just, it's just impossible. And and um, and the property that's in, we're talking about here was. You know, it 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 costs, it causes a fortune to buy that piece of property. And 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 it's zoned commercial and it's a space that. Is part of the whole project. I wish I could have not bought that piece of property. Um, but I had to and and it, that piece of property is on commercial now, so that was. The that's really the only space that's open right now that has nothing on it and that's why I went that direction. And again, I I agree fifteen spaces isn't that much, but it it does help. It does alleviate some issues. It does create a little bit of revenue. Um, it 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 solves some of the problem. Uh, again, uh, yes, there was a lot of oversight and and uh, and. If you know, it's not a perfect scenario. I understand that. It's just an area that. So I just wanna try to utilize because you know, the amount of money that we've, we, you know, paid to to buy the property.
Uh, so, uh. I heard a couple people that wanted to proceed with a public hearing. What, what do, what does council wanna do? Am I hearing two people, three people, nobody?
I think to have a public hearing, this is not the time. If we wanna divide the community into two factions or more factions or just make people mad or. That's, you know, I think the developers need to find better solutions. I agree that sixteen spaces. There on the corner. By houses that we're trying to make owner occupied. Find another solution. Maybe there's something, some other property there in Iowa City to the south. Make a. Deal with the university. Tell people to Uber in, have smaller, have smaller events, have. Have a shuttle bring people in. But I don't think adding sixteen spaces, I I don't like the idea of commercial parking for the reasons that. We've heard already from Stan who spoke quite eloquently about, there was a reason that we went with the. Hotel and not a commercial parking lot, so.
I'm just trying to come up with this consensus. I understand.
So I I know, but I just think, you know, we're having a discussion, we should discuss. And this is the time to do it before we move on and. Create more problems for people, so. I'm not in favor of moving forward and. That's where I stand. So you can pull the rest of the council, Mayor.
Thank you, Lisa.
Just, it's just, I feel like it's just a commercial space. I'm just asking the the council to allow me to. Use the commercial space for commercial use. That's all.
Can I speak? Uh, it's. It is me. I apologize. I'm breaking all sorts of protocol here. You'll have to tolerate me. I'm a former city council member, so I appreciate the decisions that you make and the information that you're uh presented with. I'm also uh employed by the city of Iowa City, so I see this and follow this stuff. Um. I I agree it's a commercial space, but don't make me go back and watch those videos if those videos exist because that land was designated as a buffer. That's what it was sold as a buffer, that it was gonna be a break between this commercial property and the rest of the neighborhood. And the idea of why it was included in this property is there wanted to be some assurances that would never be split off at a later time and redeveloped. So I think if you go through and redevelop this at this time, you're breaking a lot of trust with the rest of the community. But please don't make me watch those videos again. I wasn't on council then, but I do remember the debate over this quite vehemently.
So the buffer was actually twenty feet, Stan. There's a twenty foot buffer between the, it's not that 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 particular piece of property. Was not considered the buffer. It was twenty feet between a along the entire piece of the property.
That that property was designed to be a buffer on Melrose from what my recollection.
Right, yeah, I I'm positive the buffer was twenty foot. The twenty foot section between the entire property space, not just up there. It was the whole.
Right, and I and and along with Lisa, I do remember this grand vision of. A green pathway of walking through there. So I mean, there's things that have changed. I get that, but yeah, I. To to allow the commercial parking on a weekly basis completely changes the scope of this project. And you know, commercial parking doesn't end um. Of at at five o'clock, you know, so the the pressure that you're having on the commercial space and your events aren't always at the in the evening either, so. To have, you can't have it all. I mean, I guess is what I'm looking at. You made a deal and I I think it's been two years. There's a lot of things that can still happen. Um, but that project is still young. I think there's other options for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. You know, some people are here tonight. They've heard about it and they're here tonight. I think we need to hear from more people. And it the hotel's been running for two years, just like when, you know, so people know, we didn't know what to expect. Two years ago, we put all these. PUD agreements in place, but we don't know. I think there's a lot of people that are liking the hotel and not. Thinking it's so bad, but not everybody's gonna like it. But I'm just saying, I'd like to hear from, that's my opinion. I think people have calmed down over it and know what an asset they are to the community and to our budget. And uh, I mean, I just don't wanna listen to the people here tonight. I wanna invite people to talk about it. But it's up to the council.
Yeah, I'm I'm not ready to shut it down right now, so I'm 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 willing to take next steps. I don't. I mean, there's still a lot of unknowns for me, but I think, I, yeah, I don't need to rehash everything I said, but I'm ready. I wanna keep the conversation going. I guess at this point, I'm not ready to shut anything down.
I'm kind of in that consensus as well. Um, I think we all need to think back when O U P was being thought about. Uh, everybody was running around thinking the sky was gonna fall then too, so now everybody seems to be pretty on board with it, pretty happy with it, so. I I I think once we get some ideas and and some drawings to see what, you know, we can and cannot do and I guess I'm. Trying to ride two donkeys with one rear end here, so I I I wanna be sensitive to all the the issues with the neighbors. But also, I, you know, I look at it also from a business perspective too, while respecting, you know, you know, the agreements that were made. But you know, like I say, the economy's changed, you know, everything has changed since since COVID, so. I don't know, I I guess we're we're trying to be good neighbors. Uh, they've been a great neighbor to us. They've been a great asset financially to our city. And uh, I think we shouldn't be really anti-business, but uh. You know, it it's 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 hard to come up with the right answer and like I say, they've, they've been a good partner with us and and I believe we should. Do the same as well, so whatever that means in general, but I I think we we should at least look into it and and say, you know, we're we're trying to figure something out. And instead of just throwing the towel in on day one, I I think we ought to at least explore it and see what we can and cannot do. And you know, maybe it won't fly. I don't know, but I I would like to hear some more information and. See some plans and and see if there's any wiggle room that we can make everybody happy instead of just, we need to win and the other side needs to win. I I I'm hoping that we can come to some kind of a negotiated agreement or a a plan that will work for everybody, so I guess that's my two cents.
And Steph, I see you shaking your head, yes, so.
That I I would like to move forward and and do a public hearing.
So can we ask for a different, some different ideas from Greg other than?
This. I was just gonna say that.
The sixteen space parking lot that Greg, I'm sorry, sorry, this is not gonna make a difference for you. It's gonna make a difference. For that neighborhood and not a good one. You know, so can you come up with some different plans? And I wanna ask about the. The underground parking, what's going on with your underground parking? Can you fill us in on that?
Yeah, we, I can show it to you. So. Yeah, we use it, um, we use about half of it. Um, with the wedding space, uh, with all the, you know, the different types of furniture and the different ki- kinds of events, we. We have, we had to, you know, invest money to to. Buy things for that and we just had a lot of stor- a lot of storage. It's 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 crazy down there with all the things that we have to have for these events. So yeah, it's it's about, you know, about half of it's being used for parking.
How many spaces are you using for storage?
Thirty, I think it's thirty, thirty one spaces down there. Um, I think, yeah, so like fifteen.
So you're using fifteen spaces underground for storage? And you want to build about fifteen spaces. On a lot on Melrose and the corner, you know, on the corner of Olive Court for parking.
Yeah, I mean, I don't. I don't have any place to put this stuff. I mean, I don't, I really don't have any other spot in the hotel. I can sit.
You have a huge fifth floor. Building, I mean, room. You don't have any place to store stuff up there? Could you not, maybe if you made the storage upstairs? You could maybe have smaller events, fewer people, use fewer parking places and you'd have the underground parking available. I'm sorry, you know, we're making all these concessions and we're not even asking for a logical. Plan for this. It's just, I wanna have a parking lot. I'm sorry, I love the hotel. It's a beautiful hotel, but Greg. I just wish you would be more creative in your solution.
Lisa, I can think of a lot of creative solutions. I really could.
Okay, then come back with those since we're.
I I I can, I can. This is obviously one of them. Um, so, but I mean, like. You're probably not gonna like the other ones. This was the one I thought you would like the most.
Well, I heard about, you're talking about tearing down a couple of houses. Is that true?
Yes, that that was, that was the other one. Should should I take the house down and and put a parking lot in there? So uh, that was the next idea that Jim, actually Jim came up with that, not me. That was not my idea. It was Jim's idea. Um, but yeah, I mean, there's, there's other, I mean, that's a lot more expensive for us, money we don't have. So, I mean, that house they moved today was, I think it cost them a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to move that house.
Okay, so, uh. Did you say everything? Did council say everything they pretty much wanted to say? I don't wanna cut you off soon, but I do, we do have a meeting to. To keep going to and I wanna, uh. How should we do this? Does, do we uh, get, uh? Steve, do you have a suggestion of how to get this? Use the July meeting possibly as uh, more discussion, not have. Public hearing until later. I don't know, I'm. Can someone help me with how you want, you know?
Uh, Louisa, this is Steve. Yeah, so here. So, as I said, the public hearing is a statutory state law requirement that has to precede a zoning change. I I don't think you're ready to even consider, think about, talk about a zoning change because you're talking more about. Can you bring back some creative proposals and talk about different things? So I I'll go back to what I said a minute ago. Uh, you know, you you the council always has public hearings, so to speak, so. And I and I'm not trying to quibble with the with the phrase public hearing since I'm the one that brought it up. But I don't think you're ready to have a formal public hearing next month. I think what you ought to do, you've asked the developer, uh, you've asked Greg, come back some creative ideas and come, you know, let's. You know, I think you should just to con- continue the discussion, put it back on the agenda. Uh, have it more of a discussion point and at that point, if it if it takes shape such that you wanna move forward with. The direction to me to draft the zoning change, precede that with a public hearing and or send it to zoning commission, then I think you'd be ready to do that. Or you could do that in the following month. At the same time, um, as I've said, there are two, there are two elements here. Two uh, uh, decision, decisions for the council to make. One is a zoning decision. And if somebody makes a zoning application or a rezoning application, uh, that that person is entitled to have that considered one way or another by the council. Um, but the P U D uh, uh, decision, that development agreement, if the council is of a mind. You know, next month or whenever to say, you know what, uh, consensus, we're not gonna vote for this. Well, then that kinda kills it, you know? Anybody on the council could could make a motion to amend the P U D development agreement. And then it 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 goes as any other motion does. Is there a second? Yes, no, and and you move on that way, but um. It I I hope I'm not confusing thing. I think I probably am, but the zoning part of things. You know, if and when there's a formal zoning request, I think the council has to take that up, have its public hearing and and vote on it one way or another. The P U D part of it, the council can just say we're not interested and doesn't even have to bring it up for a for a vote. Back to the zoning part and the pub- public hearing that precedes it, I I don't think the council's at a position to have a public hearing. I think you should just put it on your agenda as a discussion point uh for next month and 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 have, you know, what I call sort of a de facto public hearing. Invite people to come and talk, listen to what they have to say, make decisions then about how you wanna move forward.
Thank you, Steve. Does council agree with that? With what Steve proposes to put it on the agenda next month? Hammer through some of these things, uh, with what Greg's gonna bring back. And, uh.
I, I just.
Go ahead.
No, it's on my place, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm in, in favor of what Steve said.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, does that sound good to the rest of the council?
Sure.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Happy to hear creative ideas that don't involve putting parking on that corner.
Thank you, Tim.
I'll agree with Tim.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Greg, uh. You'll come back next month. Our meeting next month is July eleventh. And, uh, okay, so very good. Uh, I hope people stay on and listen to the rest of the meeting. Uh, we'll move on now, uh. Did you have any more questions for Steve and his legal report?
Be- before we, before we move on, Mayor, can I ask the person who joined in who's, who's identified as iPhone? Who you are? If you'd unmute, please.
Mike is asking the iPhone. Person that's identified as iPhone, could you please identify yourself? You're on mute right now. Thank you. Nope, now you're off, now you're back on.
Louise, it might be me, it's Mary Panther. I switched from my iPad to my iPhone.
Oh, got it. No problem, Mary, I just, I, I was just worried. No, 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 you're fine. I, I would. I just want to make sure, you know, we, we need to.
I'm not, I'm not a reporter from NPR.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, thanks, Mary.
Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, any questions for Steve with the rest of his legal report? Uh, we'll discuss that resolution when we get to finance, and Steve can discuss it then. Uh, city clerk report, uh, Mike, you sent around a report, why don't you review a little bit of it?
Um, I did. The council will be considering the, um. Reapplication of Maggie's Farm for their liquor license. Remember, liquor licenses are always an annual, um. Reapplication, uh. Chief Kelsey has done the background check, uh, building inspector Gert has done structure compliance and fire check. So everything's in good order, we would recommend approval on that, um. There are, in the warrants, there are reimbursements from our ARPA business program. That will be going to Sidekick and Stella and Bar Three. For costs they have incurred in our program. And, uh, Jessica Johnson from the E C I cog has done a nice job of coordinating all that and is reminding. Those businesses that they have to make all their, they have to incur all their payments by the end of this month. So hopefully in July, we would get the last of reimbursements. From our businesses on those programs. Uh, last thing is twenty twenty-three is an election year. I did send along with my report. And I'll ask Lisa to publish, um, the guidelines for candidates and affidavit of candidacy. As well as nomination petition forms. Uh, those can be, start to be filled out in mid-August. And any application and nomination forms need to be turned in to the county auditor. At the administration building by August thirtieth. University Heights has a primary provision so that if there are more than. Two candidates for mayor or more than ten candidates for the five open council positions. We would hold a primary in early October. We have never held a primary in the city of University Heights.
Can we try to change that, Steve? We tried it once before. And I think we all remember why it didn't fly.
You, you're talking about.
Yes.
You're talking about changing the law, right?
You may try to, you may try to change, change that, yes, you may. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see this, I didn't see the smile, excuse me.
Well. I am kind of serious. Why, why do we need to have a primary? That means everybody has to decide right now. Gives us a little buffer, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
Otherwise, that's, that's all I had for this month, um.
So, we need a simple motion and second and a simple vote to approve renewal of Maggie's Farm pizza liquor licenses. There a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Tim and the second by Stephanie.
I'll step, yeah.
Any discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries five zero. Uh, thank you, Mike. Um, now, John Brown's here tonight. And, uh, he submitted warrants. For everyone to review today. Uh, did everyone have a chance to look at the warrant list? Uh, are there any, uh, questions about it? Are there any additions? Or corrections? Is there any objection to paying the warrants? I did have one question. When I looked at the Mobros, was that the number because they started? Later in the month? Cause I think the monthly rate was two seventy. And it says two fifty. What, what, why is that? John, do you know?
Uh, two fifty was a number that I've got, that I was communicated to. Uh, I don't have an invoice, but, uh.
Yeah, we, they don't do, that's not one that we invoice unless there's a change, but. My recollection, isn't it, Mike, is that it was two seventy a month?
We, we just had a resolution last month. For that, that, that up that, that up that amount, so I'm guessing what happened, John, is you're looking at, it still had last years. In the, in the books, it still had last year's amount. So, I, I would recommend that we amend the warrants for just that.
I think it's like four or five thousand, isn't it? I think, yes.
Okay, it's two seventy, okay, so, uh. We're gonna amend that. Is there anybody who objects to amending it to two seventy rather than the two fifty? Uh, I remember the vote, and, uh. Okay, I don't hear any objection to that. Is there any objection to, uh, paying the warrants as listed with that one change from two fifty to two seventy? Hearing none, the warrants will be paid by unanimous consent. Thank you, and thank you, John, for, uh. You kind of put your little. Organization to it a little different, and, uh, yeah, it was, uh, nice. I just had told them to check. With Mike so that there's no additional expense to publication.
Right, but that's also, that also helps me, because when we do publish the minutes, we do publish. There are some rules of publishing by category. So general and some things like that, so.
I knew you'd know, okay, very good, thank you. Uh, so, John, you've been working on this now and working on updating QuickBooks. And that's been going well, and now we're working on signature cards. And, uh. I'm hoping we can get that done by Friday. But if, you know, I, I mean, I know that the banks, I was copied to the Midwest one. And maybe, uh. Maybe you can get back to him and say. We need to pay the bills. You know, and it would be good if you signed it. I mean, I know Lori could still sign it, but we need to get that signature card. It seemed to me, he said it'll take several days. And I'm a little concerned about that, that maybe, maybe he doesn't know. That we're under, we want to pay our bills. Thank you, if you could pass that to him. I can't think of his name, but he's at Midwest One. And, uh, that's great. So do you have anything, uh, you want to add, John? Are there any questions for John?
I just had, I just had one, one, one item. There was something about, uh, there's some email between, um. Steve, that's I here tonight, Steve Cool, and a counselor who is here tonight. And a previous Frasier, who wasn't here, who's not here tonight. Uh, something with the office of the, uh, state auditor about unpaid a hundred and seventy-five dollar. Bill for the twenty, from the exam that was performed in twenty twenty. I did do a search and can verify that that, uh, bill was not paid. It was paid for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty-three, but not for twenty twenty, and I put that on the warrant. I, I think, uh, Mr. Scott was copying all that, uh, email.
Yeah, that's great, that's great. So basically the res- so with, uh, all I need to do now is just order a copy of that. Warrant, which I'll do, and then that shall have proof that that will be paid, so. Yeah, that's great. Thanks for doing that, John.
Thank you, John. Uh, so we'll go on to finance. So first of all, we have consideration of number twenty-three, resolution number twenty-three nineteen, and Steve. Sent this resolution and put it in his report, and this is kind of like business we do. Every six months or so. Steve, you want to just give a quick review of what that is?
You bet. Uh, Steve, me, here's Steve Cool here, okay, yeah, yeah, uh, so this, Steve Cool usually put their. It does put this together, and I just sort of, uh, put it into the resolution. So, this is an accounting, um, um. Procedure, you, you're not expending any money tonight that you haven't already voted to expend. In fact, you're not expending any at all, you're just, you're just, uh. There's probably not the right accounting description, John, but, you know, tidying up the books, so, so that. You're, you're, you're allocating funds from hotel motel and special revenue to debt service, because the debt service level levy. Which the council has adopted, uh, doesn't generate enough money to pay the, um, the, the outstanding. Obligations of the city in the term, in, 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 in the form of some, some bond borrowing. And so state law says, well, you can use some of your hotel motel tax for that, but when you do that, you need to move it over before you make the payment. Uh, and, and, uh, same with, uh, with stuff, with, uh, funds from the general fund, so that's what this does. Makes, makes the auditors happy when, when they come by and, uh, and they, they always are.
Okay, thank you. So, resolution number twenty-three nineteen is before you. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Bobby, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Doug, okay, further discussion. Okay, roll call vote.
John?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. We'll go on to approve, uh, we have to talk about, uh, city employee salaries for F Y twenty-four. And Bobby and Steph had been working on the police, and Bobby, would you like to start the?
Yeah, would it, because the majority of the salaries are police, would it be? Helpful for Troy to do his presentation now, and then we can go through it. I don't really care, I'm just, I, this is the bulk of it. Troy, you want to take over and we talk through your whole report maybe, and then that you'll cover the proposed increases, and then I can sup- finish up.
Absolutely. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh. I'll skip to that to start with, uh, Councilor gone and Scott and I have worked on. Wages, uh, Steve Cool and I, when we were assembling the budget projections, uh, back in, I don't know, the beginning of the year. Put together. Kind of a ballpark based on economic conditions at the time. Uh, recently, uh, Steph and Bobby and I sat down and. Uh, they each requested some information. I put together some comparative tables. We looked at economic factors. We factored in the. The fact that Officer Brinkema has now left, and that's a second full-time salary that's not being paid. The first full-time salary. Uh, is kind of being absorbed by, by paying additional funds to part-timers and for overtime to cover, but I just don't have any more bodies. To absorb the second salary that way and increase our coverage. Uh, we redistributed. Uh, some of the money that we will save in the short term from Officer Brinkema's salary. Uh, but even when we looked at the numbers and did the comparatives, or, you know, if we were fortunate enough to hire, find. And hire a qualified candidate at the beginning of the year, we don't. If, if we go one month without that candidate, we will more than cover the, the increases that we have, uh, projected. As opposed to what Steve Cool and work, and I worked on. Daryl Sergeant Tucker is the lowest paid sergeant in the county, which isn't surpriseable, surprising as we're the smallest department, but he was. I think in everybody's opinion considerably out of line, uh, in salary compared to what his duties are. Uh, even relative to the size of the department. We worked and, uh, Stephanie. Was actually fairly insisted, insistent that we try to make him at least make into the eighty thousand dollar range, which is comparative. It's, it's still lower than anybody else in the county, but at least it's in the same ten thousand dollar range. And we were able to do that, I believe, uh, by boosting his annual, I'm sorry, his hourly wage up to thirty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. That takes him just over eighty thousand, and then the other officer steps, which currently that is just Officer Akers, but I like to have an approved pay scale. Yep, other officer steps would all increase by, uh. An inflation index that is in line. With what is currently occurring, uh, and it, it, we calculated it out at six percent, and that took the hourly. And I, I apologize, my report went out way late today, but Sergeant Tucker's on vacation, and I was away last week. Uh, but that takes our salary equivalents, and, and recall that officers work forty-two hours a week, not forty. Uh, that takes their salary equivalents, well, Chris Akers would be just over seventy thousand, our starting pay. Uh, for somebody with no experience would be fifty-one thousand. We are still the lowest paid agency in the area. However, it helps close that gap a little bit, and I think that it is fair, and I also think that it is. Uh, I think that it's a reasonable increase, and. You know, Bobby was extremely concerned, and, and I understand that too, that whatever we do is sustainable into the future. And I believe we looked at those numbers and show that it's sustainable, not only in the short term. But in the long term, especially with some of the other proposals that we have on the table. Uh, Bobby or Steph, do you want to say anything towards this before I talk about a couple other items?
I don't, I just, I totally, wholeheartedly agree with you, Chief, that, um, our sergeant is. Very much underpaid, and I think this is, is, you know, bringing us a little bit more competitive with the other agencies. Um, and certainly, he's. Well worth it. His hours and his efforts are. More than what he's paid, and I just think this is. This is what we need to do in the next steps to. Show him that we, we appreciate his service. Yeah, Bobby?
Yeah, yeah, no, I think Troy summarized it well, just. In, in, I mean, just to re-summarize it, we're really just trying to get. Our sergeant position up closer to what everyone else in the county has paid. We're not quite there yet, but we're the, we're smaller, and so. Um, this is our attempt to do that, um. So, yeah, basically. Basically, if you look at, uh, Daryl Officer Tucker's thirty-six sixty-four, uh. That gets him a little bit closer, the top officer pay, so for his, for his, the, the percentage increase for that was like ten. Point six percent, uh, for that position, and, um. And I think Troy is trying to balance, you know, just keeping people here, keeping good officers on the force, uh, not losing anyone to, you know, higher pay. Cause the reality is they could easily go next door anywhere and get paid more. Um, obviously, there's certain perks to working in our police department, but, uh, that's the intent there. Uh, and then the second line item there is just the top officer pay, um. And. Uh, and obviously, that's, that's a multiple officer, so that, uh, that's the, the, the biggest thing, uh, Troy's, um. Uh, I mean, the increase, um, I forget the percent, five and a half percent or six percent, um. From where he was last year, um, is, is reflected in that number you're seeing there too, so. Any other questions on the police force, I guess?
And, and for project. And, and for projections, when I worked with Steve Cool at the beginning of the year to put together the budget, and also when. I was putting together comparisons and projections for Steph and Bobby. Even though we only have me, Daryl, and Chris right now. I do all my officer projections at the top officer pay, because if I projected them at anything less than that. And we hired an officer, if we were fortunate enough to hire an officer with five years or ten years' experience. Then we would actually be paying more than I projected as opposed to. For instance, right now, I'm considering, I'm, I'm trying to recruit three different officers or three different officers, and hopefully one of them will come through. And. One of them has, I can't remember if it's two years or three years' experience, so he would actually plug in at a lower level. Which means that at the end of the year, my projection at top officer pay. There would be a surplus in our budget line. I, I just, I, I would rather project and make sure I have enough to cover than project on the short end. If you look at the table that I sent you, I specifically did not include myself. I didn't want to say here's what my salary should be. Uh, in the numbers that I projected, I just used the same six percent. That not, not the sergeant, but the officer pay step would increase. And that actually takes it to, if I remember right, ninety-six thousand nine hundred and ninety. I'm not sure where the ninety-six, six-nine-nine comes from. But I don't care. That is, that's frankly up to council. I mean, it's, it's council's prerogative as to whether I receive. Anything or more or less than, than the officers, that is, that is all your choice. The only other thing I would comment on as far as my salary is my anniversary date and the date that it's actually to be assessed at was back in April. Uh, I'm, I'm not stressed out about that, uh, when it's, it's just because of where I appear in the budget cycle and. And last time we went through this, it was just made retroactive to, to reflect my salary date. So. Again, I'm not sure what the ninety-six, six-nine-nine is. I, I had to guess, maybe that's at the five and a half percent rate that was initially discussed. I'm not sure, but that's all up to council.
That, well, Troy, that, I think that's a six percent, um, unless I misunderstood what your current one was now, ninety-one, five?
Correct. Ninety-one, five, which I believe if you take it six percent, I, I'm not sure, but I. I recalled it being nine, six, nine, nine, zero, but I'm not sure. Not sure.
I don't know, I just did the math. I think it's right, but, um.
I come up with ninety-six, nine, nine, zero.
Oh, nine, nine, zero, that, you're right, sorry, that is a typo. I, I apologize. It is ninety-six, nine, nine, zero. Sorry.
Okay.
Either way, so we can, we can modify that and, uh, I guess approve it if everyone, uh, is on board, um, everyone else. City clerk position, um. Five and a half percent raise, um, John Brown is coming up. Um, at thirty-five an hour, I think long-term, the goal will be for John to take over. Um, some more of what Steve Cool does long-term. I mean, John's got more experience, and so that could be an added benefit to the. Um, to the community just because of his expertise, and then Terry Gert, um, and Brian. Are, well, Terry's changing a little bit of, of. To Louise, can you speak to the, the changes there with the hotel going offline now and?
Yeah, you know, as I told, uh, Bobby, too, that. Terry Gert, instead of doing hourly, he wanted to be put on a set salary. And since the hotel has been done, and of course the O U P. He feels more comfortable in not submitting hours, and so he wanted a monthly salary, and basically that's twenty thousand a year. For the six sixty-seven per month. He also has additional, uh, things with the school. And I think that more than covers it with the permits that they've been taking out, and also he's been working with the. Zoning commission, and that's a few more hours than he normally does. So he told me that's what he'd like, and I know he talked to Tim about this earlier in the year, I believe. And then Brian Jensen, he's always been paid a monthly, uh, uh, fee. And that was started originally by Stan Loverman when he was our, uh, housing inspector. And, uh, we just have him doing a lot more, and so his raise was something like, I think it was eleven. Twenty-five or eleven fifty, and now it's twelve fifty. And, uh, so that's, that's how, and that's, I think fifteen thousand a year. My math may not be very good, but I believe that's right. I can multiply, and, uh, so those are the salaries and. We have to put these in the minutes that council approved it, if council's okay with this. Because the city audit, I think Mike can speak to this too, one, said that this should go. In the minutes, and, uh. Mike, weren't you there when he spoke of that? I think we've been doing it a couple of years now.
And if I may, Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, just because again, I like to have an approved pay scale instead of per officers. I have it all filled out. Mike will make in the minutes that whatever my salary is, but it comes out again, whatever number we talked about, I'll add that. But the only other explanation, part-time officers. They received a five and a half percent on their hourly wage instead of the six percent as we originally projected. And until we get to full staffing, I will continue, unless council objects, I'll continue to pay them. The additional four dollars an hour, which is more than absorbed by one of the officer's positions, so that we can. Continue to maintain to the best of our ability, uh, twenty-four seven coverage, which is frankly not possible right now with two officers down, but we're doing our best.
Okay, so you'll add that too. We always included part-time too. Thank you. Any questions for, uh. Troy or me or Bobby or Steph? Uh, so I think we can just do a simple motion on this to approve the salaries. Uh, yes, that were discussed, and, uh, is there a motion to approve the salaries? Okay, Steph, Steph is raising her hand. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tim. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Okay, motions carried, five, zero, motion carried. Thank you, and, um. Let's see, so we're done with finance, and you are going to continue, Troy, with your report?
Right, I have two other items that I'd like to touch on, and I'll be brief, uh. As far as commercial parking issues, it's not only courtyard that is dealing with it. The commercial entities at one university place are also dealing with it. It's in my report, uh, under, uh, two. The four, but you should know about it because I, I'm your representative on the O U P board. Uh, the commercial businesses are, especially as their events expand and sidekick holds more. Uh, because of COVID is, has, hopefully in the rearview near now, holds more events. There's been recent conflicts. And need for additional parking and conflicts between, for example, sidekicks need for parking and. Uh, Maggie's need for parking, so where, there is a meeting that is scheduled, uh, hopefully will be scheduled this week. Uh, to try to work that out, but that's not a problem that's isolated to, to the courtyard. And then the next item that I'd really like to tuck on and touch on and delve into a little bit is, uh, the A T E update, which if you're following at home, it's. Uh, item number two, D as in David. For council's direction, I met with Gen Optic, uh, representatives while I was at the Iowa Police Chiefs Association. Training conference, they came out, uh, and did an assessment with me one morning, and I spoke through what our citizen complaints are. And the issues that we're trying to address as far as, uh, really targeting that. Fifteen percent, not the, you know, the, the ones above the eighty-fifth percentile, the fifteen percent that continue to speed and. By the one study that I had in front of me, uh, speeding at, at ten miles an hour, eleven miles an hour over on Cozer. I talked about potential locations, our concerns on Cozer, our concerns on Melrose, the possibility of, of. Of sunset, uh, some spot enforcement, the stop sign at Cozer and. Uh, George, and after walking through the community with them. Decided that the best place to start would be with, if we move forward with this with A T Es or, or for the community with. Uh, traffic camera enforcement on both Melrose and the twelve hundred block and Cozer. Uh, between George and, uh, Melrose. Those Cozer specifically is the one that generates the most complaints. Matter of fact, I heard from, um. Uh, Mary is in the council meeting, I heard from her, I received an email from her last week while I was gone about excessive speeding on Melrose, I'm sorry, on Cozer. So these address the community concern, they, and they aren't just anecdotal observations, they're actually data-driven, and it shows that. Again, fifteen percent of the motorists in that section of Cozer, approximately fifteen percent travel. Above ten miles an hour over the posted speed limit. There was no recent survey on Melrose, so Gen Optic, uh, conducted a survey for me. We ran, uh, just because of the availability of equipment, we ran a ten-day survey. Granted, our traffic count was low, and we knew it would be low because university isn't in session that yet, but the. The hope was that the relative numbers of speeders in each category, the percentage of number of speeders in each category would be. Still consistent to what it was if there were higher traffic counts. I include that in information with you, but there were thirty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-four vehicles that passed through during the six days that we were doing that study. That's about half the number of vehicles that we would expect to see at other times in the year. Uh, but a little over five thousand vehicles per day. Of those five thousand vehicles, over eleven percent were traveling. Eleven miles an hour or more over the posted steep, speed limit, and you can see the breakdown if. If you found my very late sent report, you can see the breakdown, uh. Three thousand one hundred and eighty-two, so roughly ten percent were. Between eleven and fifteen miles per hour with the speed limit, four hundred and twelve motorists were. Were twenty-one to twenty-five miles an hour, I'm sorry, were. Sixteen to twenty miles an hour over the speed limit, forty-three were in the forty-six to fifty mile an hour range. And there were seven vehicles during that time that were traveling over fifty miles an hour down Melrose. I have the breakdowns at time. It's very possible that's, that especially some of those higher speed vehicles. Might have been emergency vehicles. I, I don't have video to go back and look at that, but. I think the relevant point is. There is, it's not just a perceived problem on Cozer, it's not just a perceived problem on Melrose. There is a significant portion of motorists that are traveling eleven miles an hour or more over our posted speed limits. As I've done the research, I think automated tra, automated traffic enforcement is a very effective way, especially for a community like ours. And we've talked about that before. I just need to slow, or we just need to slow some of the vehicles down, and that has an. Immediate impact on the vehicles behind them. Will we succeed in slowing all of them down? No, we won't. But those that choose not to heed the additional signage that would also be provided by the company, and that would include one more. Uh, solar-powered lighted radar sign as you enter on our community on Sunset, uh. After going through, I don't think it's necessary after doing the survey, I don't think it's necessary to put one on the east end of Melrose, nor do I think it's. Necessary to put one on George as far as the lighted signs. However, all four of those entrances would have. Clear signage that indicated that we take, we, we take our community safety seriously, and that we use. Traffic cameras for speed enforcement. In addition to that signage, there would be signage as you approached where the traffic cameras, the fixed cameras were actually positioned. Uh, again, the goal is to reduce the speeds in our neighborhoods to gain voluntary compliance, compliance. The goal is not. To issue citations, civil citations, civil fines. The goal is to slow people down. But if people choose not to heed the signage, if they choose not to heed all the warnings, if they choose not to heed the. The media that we push out, if they choose. To speed through our community above whatever we put at our, our threshold at, and for the sake of, of this conversation, I'm saying eleven miles an hour over. Then they're not rolling, that motorist isn't rolling the dice, and you know what? I think I can get away with it, or I can get away with it nine out of ten times. They will receive a citation. Every motorist that goes over will see, receive a citation. It will be timely. And, and it will be, um, certain, so it, that should gain again. If it might not be voluntary compliance, compliance, it might be negatively reinforced, but it should gain compliance, that corrected measure. So you can see, or you can read what I put all in the report, but, uh. I have been become, I have become convinced over the last two, two years that this would be an effective solution to some of the chronic complaints. Mary Panther is in, I've not talked with Mary, but Mary is, is still in the, uh. Virtual council room, yes. I don't know if she wants to weigh in for again, or even has, has any comments, but. The goal is not to catch people for it to be a gotcha moment. The goal is to make sure everybody's aware that we take our. Community safety, our, our road safety, our, our kids, the safety of our visitors, our pets, our, our kids. Seriously, and we don't want to write you a ticket. We don't want to issue a civil fine. But if you choose to do this, if you choose to ignore. All of our warnings and the public knowledge that it's out there, then you do so knowing. That she'll get a ticket. I mean, it's like, it's like giving an intentional foul in basketball. Uh, I, I don't know, I, I, I don't know if it's appropriate, but Mary, I, I would invite you to, to chime in if you have anything to say.
Yeah, no, I would just thank you for saying what you've said and for taking action on it. Um, it's just. In my mind, I've lived in this house for twenty-seven years and twelve years before that on Melrose, and. Something needs to happen, something needs to happen. It's, it's just gotten worse and worse, so I think what you've outlined sounds very good.
I've had the, I had the good fortune, and I don't see him in the room, but I had the good fortune, uh, had a. Uh, somebody who lives on the edges of University Heights contacted me because he saw that we were discussing this in last council meeting and. He offered some other solutions, uh, different kinds of enforcement, traffic calming measures. And I asked him to meet with me, and we went through some of the steps that as a community we've tried and. And what some of the residents along Cozer, for example, have suggested, and how we've explored those options, and from a traffic engineering standpoint. They really just weren't appropriate or long-term effective solutions for, for a problem that has. Has been a chronic issue or chronic complaint in the four-plus years that I've been here. So again, I. I've become a fan if we wish to pursue this, uh. I, I've been working with Gen Optic now to this point. They were one of three companies that I, that I contacted or reached out to, and they're the only ones that followed through. And I've developed a working relationship with them. We certainly would need to sign. Uh, service agreement with them, although when I reviewed what they sent us earlier. That's no longer the equipment we would be looking at, not just two fixed cameras, but we would be looking at also. Uh, one handheld, one, one handheld unit for spot enforcement. So if we had complaints. On Sunset that we wanted to address, instead of having an officer out there pulling one in ten cars over one and speed, one in ten. Speeders over, you'd be able to set up, you'd program in the handheld unit to your location, to the speeds. And you calibrate it, and you would stand there, and you would basically be the furniture that was holding that camera for as long as you were doing sport. Or spot enforcement. So whether it was on Sunset or whether it was on Oak Crest, or recently had a complaint. About Cozer and, and people avoiding Oak Crest after school pickup times and speeding along Cozer up to bypass that. It would be easy to address that without additional cameras. The contract is five years and, and, uh, Counselor Swales had asked about the data collection on it. And I don't remember if I reported that back, uh, they would, the company operates, uh, has their ability to run. And let's to run checks on the license plates. Under the contract that we have with them, they cannot turn around and, and market the information that they're selling. They're under the same. Restrictions on that information that law enforcement is, so it doesn't go anywhere except for enforcement purposes. Uh, in my conversation with. With a former sergeant of, of that musketeen police department, and now works for Gen Optic. I ask, you know, what is your? Do people really comply with, first of all, the, the cameras, and yes, they do, they, there is a noticeable slowdown. We should be able to prove that with data that they are being effective. The cameras and yes, they do. They there is a noticeable slowdown. We should be able to prove that with data that they are being affected. But when the civil notices go out of, you know what, you. You were. Recorded doing this fast on our streets and here's our fine structure and here's the fine you owe. How many? What's what's typical for payment and and? Uh, Phil said, you know, it's difficult to say what's typical that he he doesn't know, but with musketeen. With first notice approximately seventy two percent of, which I thought was pretty accurate, actually. But seventy two percent of the people who received notice of violation paid their fines with their civil fines with first notice. Again, it's a civil fine. It does not impact their driving record. It does not because it doesn't impact their driving record. It has no impact on their insurance. Nor is there any associated court fees or. Uh, surcharges or anything like that. We certainly can build that in if we wanted, but I don't think that it's necessary. The goal is not. To generate revenue. The goal is to gain compliance and reduce speeds and and make our street safer. I'm not going to be naive and say that it won't generate revenue because it will or the company wouldn't be providing the service to us. But that is not the goal. That is a byproduct. The goal is to. Slow vehicles to a more reasonable speed as they pass through our residential neighbors. Our neighborhoods as opposed to the more open arterial boulevard that exists. West of us and people are coming off the interstate where the speed limit or two eighteen where the speed limit sixty five. And they may or may not be slowing down to thirty five coming through down Melrose. But when they hit our streets, we want them. Closer. We don't want ten percent of the vehicles or fifteen percent on the vehicles on. Cozer. To be traveling in excess of eleven miles an hour over our posted speed limits. And I'm sorry, I got on a soapbox there again, but if anybody has any questions, uh, please don't hesitate to ask, but if we do choose to move forward, I I know that Steve drafted. An ordinance. But if we wish to move forward with gen optics, then we we. Are kind of at a position that we either need to tell them what more we want for them or. Or I need to say, you know what? Can you fix these things on your service agreement and then present it to council to be signed?
Does counsel want to comment on this now or do you want to hear from Steve on the ordinance that he? Maybe we ought to hear from Steve. On the ordinance.
Sure, uh, if I can, so Troy, I would just suggest if if Gen Optic is going to update. Some of that language with respect to the present equipment, if you can get that to me, you and I can look at it and we can have it ready for the council next month. Um, yeah, the ordinance didn't make a lot of changes from last month, except the council had 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 to ask that I um. Change the uh the fines, the civil fines that are specified to mirror. The Iowa state code, the Iowa law, what what police officers call the scheduled violations. And so that that change is reflected in what's before you is proposed ordinance two fifty two. Uh, those are straight from the Iowa code and um. Uh, I should say with one with one exception and that is that the 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 biggest number. If you're going twenty five and over. In a construction zone. Uh, the Iowa code imposes a fine of. Think it's a thousand and forty or something like that. It might might even be twelve hundred. It's a lot of money. Uh, but um, the city is limited. To uh to uh seven hundred and fifty dollars in terms of uh. Uh municipal infractions. And so that's why that that amount is selected. The rest of these are straight out of the Iowa code.
Could I comment, Steve?
Yep.
Uh, I saw that Steve had adopted the code. I mean, exactly as it is written. I will need to check with Gen Optic. I only looked at Steve's draft today. I'm not sure how. Administratively it easy it is to say, okay, you know what? There's now construction on this block of the twelve hundred block of Melrose, so. I just, I need to talk with them and and probably have a conversation with Steve, but but perhaps. And I'll have this conversation with Steve, but perhaps we just say, let's do away with the construction and here is the. Here are the civil fines for speeding. I I don't know what Steve's thoughts are on that, but again, I'm just looking at it from a an administrative point of view as far as administering the program.
Yeah, Troy, what I would say is let's kind of same thing with the with the contract. Find out what the what the limitations or the possibilities are with Gen Optic and then you and I can discuss it. Uh, you know, the council could include it as a as a uh an option uh and and you know, sort of not not right at that level if it wanted to. So let's let's talk about it.
Okay, and I on the flip side, I could see where it would be better, very beneficial for if we were doing construction, we were doing spot enforcement because we had complaints of speeders. Uh, I can see where it might be beneficial. I'm just I'm from an administrative point of view. I'll I'll touch base with them and get back with you.
Perfect. So that's all I have to say, Amer, about the about the ordinance.
Okay, so did I understand you're going to leave out the construction? Or?
Well, we're going to talk with Gen Optic about the, you know, whether that administratively is is doable for them, but. If the council, if the council wants to go ahead and vote on this for first the first reading tonight, I think that's fine. If we change it next. Next month, you could collapse two into one, thinking that you've really already had it once and you know, it's just making that change or 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 start over, whatever you want.
Okay. What direction does the council want to take on this? I was shocked by the. The survey. I did not think it was going to show that many speeders. Wow.
Can Louise? Can I make a motion? Is that possible already?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance or whatever the right wording is.
Yeah, first consideration of ordinance number two fifty two.
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion by Stephanie. Is there a second? Second by Doug and then we'll have discussion.
Okay.
Okay, discussion if council wants more discussion. Okay, I don't see any discussion. Roll call vote.
I think we talked it good.
Okay. Thank you.
More?
Hi.
Schroder?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Swales?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. And then Stephen. Chief will. Follow up with that and we'll see about next month. Okay, very good. We'll go down to Ryan Foley still here. I see Ryan. Uh, we'll go down to streets and sidewalks.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Froma. I've got, sorry, I'm working through a summer cold here, so I apologize if I. Sound a little hoarse, but uh. I don't have any resolutions tonight. We've just got a few things on um. On my report, I'll run through. Uh, Horn Elementary, we did have a couple more um submittals and reviews. Uh, with a consultant, so that's ready um. For approval and then I'll I'll course correspond with Terry Gert about getting that uh building permit issued. Uh, now the site plan comments have been picked up. Uh, I've got some information here about the George Street cul-de-sac repairs. Um, if you'll remember, we we this is something we discussed a little bit during um. The budget process. And um, so Metronet, while they were doing some boring, had damaged uh the sanitary sewer main along the George Street cul-de-sac. Uh, off of Melrose. And Iowa City. Owns the sanitary sewer. And so they took charge in coordinating the repair of that with a contractor that they hired and. Um, you know, that work is going to be reimbursed by Metronet. So in order to do that, the sanitary sewer was. Right at the back of the curb slash slightly under it um in some portions. Of the street. And so they had to remove a portion of the street and um we put back temporary pavement because of it it was, I think it was just after Thanksgiving. Uh, so it's too cold for permanent paving and we're going to uh require. Metronet pay to replace an entire panel, so to the center line of the roadway. Uh, to make that repair. And there's a few other panels right adjacent to those. That are quite deteriorated, so the existing condition was was poor uh right at the low point of the of the street where the intakes are. Uh, so I've been working with um the contractor, which is uh Lynch Excavating that did the work for Iowa City. Um, just met with them to try and get an estimate. I don't have the numbers for them yet, but. On the cost that would be for for sort of the city half to kind of. Combine efforts and complete uh uh. An entire width repair of the roadway there. And then um Oak Crest Avenue and Mahaska Drive intersection. Uh, so that work started this week. Uh, Counselor Swales and I handed out some notices uh last week to the residents uh adjacent to the work. And on uh Mahaska Court cul-de-sac to let them know that that work was going to start. Uh, contractor. Mobilized Tuesday, yesterday. And uh they started removals today on on the concrete pavement. So I, right now they're anticipating that they have compaction testing done tomorrow. We'll get some paving hubs, some survey out there tomorrow and uh. Hopefully they'll be pouring at least some, if not the majority of what's been removed back on Friday. And then. Finish up, may possibly finish up a lot of the concrete work next week and then right now their. Tentative schedule for the asphalt mill and overlay is is early July, but they don't have a solid date from L L Pelling, who's their sub consultant for that work. Quite yet. I've got uh Monroe Street improvements, so we've got this out for bid. This is a project that uh we had a resolution last meeting. Um, to issue for bid. Um, so we've done that bids will be due on June twenty second, so that's uh not this Thursday, next Thursday. And then we'll report on those at the special meeting uh at the end of June. Uh, for award of that contract. And then I've got something in here for nine oh nine Melrose parking lot. We've we've had a lot of discussion on that one tonight. Um, I guess I'll just. Note that the plan was forwarded to me from Terry Gert and so we we made some comments and um. I believe Steve included uh that markup with his uh legal report for everyone to see, so. So I issued some comments back to them uh pretty general um site. Um, plan comments um and then we kind of got with Steve Ballard about. The requirements of the ordinances in the zoning, which we've discussed tonight already. And then under miscellaneous, I've just got that the A D box was installed uh at Triangle Park, so that work has been completed.
Any questions for Ryan? You know, I do have to say Ryan. Is one of these real talkative engineers. I thought he was quite talkative and then I found out. Uh, that a transportation planner from the M P O. Who sister went to school with him, okay? That he had a baby in January and that's why, you know, he and his wife had a baby and he told no one.
But I sworn I said something.
Oh, no, you didn't. No, you didn't. And so anyway, tell us about the little guy.
Uh, he's he's five months old now. Uh. It's last week, so he's rolling over, not crawling yet. He's starting to talk a lot more. He's kind of a screamer.
He's not an engineer, I guess.
Just, yeah, he just. He just sees the dogs run by now and he starts yelling like he wants to pet them, so.
Some someday, maybe you can put him on camera. When he's awake.
Yeah, well, I. I I usually do the meetings at our office to avoid all the noise from the dogs and.
I I I thought you were at the office.
And him now, yeah, yeah, so.
Okay, well, congratulations, Ryan.
Yep, thanks.
And does anyone have any questions for Ryan about this? Uh, did you have any follow up? Uh, Doug?
Uh, no, I'm just going to ask Ryan, when they do soil compaction, do they also do like perk test on the the soil?
Uh, no, we don't usually do a a perk test on um. Underneath the slab. No, we usually just do compaction. Um, and there there's a moisture uh and density reading with that um compaction test. What we'll also have them do is um. Approofal of the subgrade, the dirt grade. Um, with a loaded dump truck to see if there's any, sometimes compaction tests don't tell you um. I guess if it's kind of like high fatty clay content, it can um. Have a passing compaction test, but when you roll a dumb truck over it, it can still leave big ruts. So what we do is we have them do that and it helps us tell us if there's any areas we need to core out for. For some stabilization, usually just put in rock then in those cases, but. It's going to be difficult on the cul-de-sac side. I've already told them that they won't have to do a proof roll on that side just because it's so short, the stretch that we're doing. But on the north side of the intersection, we're going to do the proof roll, so.
I just know on the north side, there's always been water underneath the street. And didn't know if that water was able to drain or escape or go into the ground or.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, hopefully with the new paving will have um. Um, better flow, uh, because there 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 is some sort of high and low points in the existing that we're trying to get rid of with this. Uh, new payment, but. We don't have like a subdrain or anything. Put in there um in the plan for this street, but um we do have a modified subbase or rock base. So that'll help provide some relief um. It with freestyle events, so.
Got you. Oh, sounds good.
Thank you, Ryan. So we'll go on to Tim Schroder. Tim, do you have anything to report this month?
Nothing, but I hope to have something. I got to get with Ryan and talk about this, the. Identity piece, which I hope we can talk about maybe going in the round garden in front of. Stella's. And have that vertical, some sort of a vertical sign that's. You know, an identity piece for University Heights and also could be classified as a maybe a. Means of creating. Um. You know, selfies and all of that, the.
Oh.
Tourism, right, to University Heights.
I like that.
Instead of doing this, that standard typical sign you see everywhere, let's do something.
I love the vertical, because we're the heights, so vertical.
That's right.
Yeah, like it.
I I love your creativeness. I guess that's where your degree comes in.
Yeah, it's good for something, maybe. More on that later.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, and then we have uh. Lisa, you submitted your written. Uh. Report for e-government.
I did, and I guess I'll just mention, maybe these could be announcements in the minutes. Since the fourth of July is coming up, fire, actually, it's the use of fireworks. Is prohibited in the city of University Heights and surrounding areas. Refugees and recycling will be collected on Wednesday, July fifth. That's what I'll mention.
Thank you. Any questions for Lisa? Uh, I'm glad you included the fireworks. I didn't think of that. That was. Key. And uh, so that'll be under announcements. Any other announcements?
How did our citywide garage sale go? It looked kind of like a flop from my end. I guess I'll two people.
It wasn't that successful, to be honest with you. I don't know if it was the weather or just what, but you know, some years go like that.
We sold a lot at our place.
I took everything to good will.
You should have sent them my direction, Mike.
I did. I told them, I I I said, there is a garage sale on the curve at Highland. There's one on Grand. I I did. I I knew where the other ones were and sent people that way.
Oh, awesome. Well, that's great. Thank you. And uh, any other announcements? Is there any objection for it? Oh, I do want to remind everybody about the June twenty seventh special meeting. At seven o'clock, it should take just a few minutes. And is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone.